Good morning. I'd like to call the Reno County Commission meeting for Tuesday, March 17th. The order please. We'll start out with a pledge of allegiance and then a prayer by Henry Licon with our Redeemer Lutheran Church. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Eternal Father, we pray for our community. In the large world you created, we suddenly feel how small it truly is as we are ever so interconnected across the globe. Let us remember with Thanksgiving your eternal promise to care for your people. We give you thanks for your hand of protection over our community. We ask you to continue to shelter us from both man and natural calamities, especially from viruses and pathogens that seem to have few boundaries. We pray for all staff and many county workers who carry out their duties as they serve the well-being of your people. Grant health and safety to all law enforcement agents, fire and emergency personnel as they strive to keep your people safe and healthy as they serve and protect others. We ask for your continual blessing for all citizens, services, and industry who together support and strengthen Ark County. We plead for your mercy to protect industry, commerce, care centers, hospitals, schools, and churches in and around our community during these difficult and these unknowing times. We commend you, Father, the leaders and administrators of Reno County. Grant them wisdom to enact fair and protective regulations, decisions for your people to whom they serve. Guide these gathered this morning to enable your people, our community, and businesses to weather the storm ahead and that your name will be glorified through the work that they do. We ask all this to your Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Thank you very much. With the approval of the other commissioners, I'd like to move item eight up to the top of the agenda, please, even above public comment because what Nick might say might stimulate others that are in the room that want to comment on public health. Is that appropriate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Director of Health Department, Nick Baldetti, would you please make your report?
Morning Commissioners, Nick Baldetti, Reno County Health Department Director, also the appointed Health Officer for Reno County. I was before you last Tuesday and I had informed you of beginning actions internally of instituting incident command in response to the current COVID-19 pandemic. I also reported in terms of our community's preparedness and planning initiatives. Most certainly, I'm very grateful for the amount of time that was invested in the months prior to the actions of last week. I think as most are aware, the situation not only for our county, the state, and the nation has sure, the environment has certainly shifted since the last time I was before you. I will admit that this last week and weekend has just been absolutely inundated with information, meetings, and planning and response from a public health perspective. There's, well, there's just a lot of information in a short amount of time and it seems to be evolving very quickly. That being said, so for the jurisdiction of Reno County, we are in very close concert and lockstep with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, as well as the Kansas Department of Education, Kansas Department of Emergency Management, as well as the Governor's Office. Based off of the recommendations delivered by both Kansas Department of Health and Environment, Education, and the Governor's Office herself, we've adopted the recommendations of limiting mass gatherings to under 50. We are continuing to advocate on the practice of social distancing, which constitutes roughly a six-foot bubble around each individual. And if you have to spend, if you have to spend time potentially within that six-foot bubble, try to limit that time to under 10 minutes. That seems to be the timeframe of contagion from the pathogen that is COVID-19. We're also advocating for our Reno County constituents to exercise best judgment and prudence in terms of social gatherings and use their best judgment. If it's a nonessential social gathering, to please attempt to refrain from gatherings as much as possible. There's a balance there and we understand that. We have to balance proper prevention and preparedness with quality of life as well. Additionally, on Sunday, which would have been the 15th, 15th, Kansas Department of Education Commissioner have been in communication with all superintendents throughout the state of Kansas. And subsequently, the Governor came out with a strong recommendation for schools to close for one week in conjunction with their previously scheduled spring break. So in effect, advocating for a two-week closure for all schools. And we promptly met at around 8:00 PM on Sunday and pushed that information out as quickly as we could, knowing that the potentiality of school on Monday for some of our school districts. It's only Tuesday morning, I guess. It feels like a whole week has gone by. But I think for right now, I might just, I assume there's many more questions than there are what I could just diatribe on. So how about, how about I stand to start answering some of your questions? And then if something comes back to me, I'll make sure to infuse it into my report. And I'm happy to field any number of questions for as long as we need.
Okay. Well, first of all, Nick, I want to thank you on behalf of the county residents and the Commissioners for all the time and work you and your department have put into this at this point in time. I know it's been very time-consuming, but I think we all feel that pre-planning is extremely necessary and that's what we've done to this date. I guess a couple of questions that I might have. I know, I believe it was last Wednesday that the hospital had a kind of a walkthrough on a potential case and how it might be handled. Did not really hear a report on, did that go satisfactorily? And is the hospital at this point in time feel that they've done everything to prepare for possible clients?
So I'll answer both questions. I would say that the walkthrough went very well. I believe that Hutch News ran an article on it. They invited, or they opened the actual drill itself up to the media to be able to, you know, report on it. But I understand that the drill from my contacts at Hutch Regional went very well. And then I would also say that I'm having, if not daily, a bi-daily regular meeting with our healthcare partners and/or Hutch Regional. And I can say that they are eminently prepared for this event. I can't speak, I can't speak completely to their internal operational structures verbatim, but I do know that they have restricted access to two points of access to the hospital. I believe the emergency department entrance and then the front entrance. They're currently screening every individual, whether that's an employee, a client, or visitor. I believe they put in restrictions to if someone is to be admitted at the hospital, that there's one primary point of contact, family member, spouse, what have you. And that's the only individual that can, that can visit. But again, every entrance is being screened by Hutch Regional staff to ensure that they've not run a fever. And they aren't, excuse me, they aren't showcasing the upper respiratory symptoms that are associated with COVID-19, which is the tightness of the chest, coughing, shortness of breath, as well as the fever which has to meet or exceed 100.4. Additionally, the hospital has been a fantastic partner in terms of communal disaster preparedness planning. And we have a number of different models of service that are being discussed right now behind, you know, behind closed doors, I suppose, in case, depending on how this evolves. So I would say they are quite ready for this.
Secondly, was it your recommendation that the nursing homes instituted no visitors? To me, that is exceptional. You know, that's our most at-risk people and to do that quickly, I thought was very, very good.
So CMS, that most facilities in our community had either made that decision Thursday, Thursday of last week and/or Friday, or at least began the institution of those protocols. And that was really done in conjunction with conversations that I was having with the community, as well as the Center for Medic, CMS, I'm sorry, Center for Medicare.
Thank you.
Had pushed out regulations to agent care facilities, as well as best practices to restrict visitation. So it really was kind of a triangulation of just timing. But I agree, I think that was extremely pertinent and was done, done very well by our local institutions.
Does Reno County have test kits available?
We do. And actually, I appreciate this question. I'd like to expand on this just a little bit. So Reno County does have testing capability and we are, we are testing our constituents. But I would like to illuminate a little bit of what that means. So right now, the state of Kansas has a finite supply of test kits for COVID-19. That is not to say that we do not have enough right now. The number that are matching the requirements for testing is appropriate for the resources that we have. However, at some point, we will run out if nothing changes. It's very important right now that people understand that if you are, if you are not showing symptoms and you are concerned, your course of action should be to call your primary care physician, first and foremost. But generally speaking, those who are non-symptomatic are not going to be able to receive a test at this time. And I'll expand on that in a second. If you are showing symptoms, again, your first course of action should be to call your primary care physician and/or the Health Department. And we will assist you with vetting, whether you meet certain criteria. That primary care physician will then approve you to come into the healthcare facility, of which then specimen will be collected. And that primary care physician will be in contact with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, who will then secondarily vet and screen your risk factors for being tested for COVID-19. And that must be approved by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. Those are the ones that are being tested with the limited supply that we have at the state level for COVID-19. Now, there is a federal, national narrative that anyone and everyone can be tested. Alls they have to do is ask. That is currently not the situation at the local level. And that is not just for Reno County. That is nationwide. There is a lag between what is being publicly announced at a federal level and what the reality of the operational and supply chain is at the local level right now. Right now, we are still waiting for the Senate to pass the emergency spending bill for COVID-19 response. That bill, unless it gets severely amended in the Senate, is the bill that is supposed to waive insurance copays for people to be tested. It's supposed to infuse, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but billion, I think it's billions, if I remember right, into the response for COVID-19, as well as increasing the capacity for test kits at a national level, which will trickle down to the local level. That has not been passed yet. So the abundance of test kits is not meeting the narrative at the federal level. Additionally, the announcement on Sunday by the Admiral of Public Health Corps announced the availability of now 1.9 million rapid, rapid response test kits, which are different than the current tests that we're using, as well as the expansion of 2,000 laboratory facilities in the United States to expand to being able to test. In addition to his model of test specimen collection, I'm calling it point of collection model, it is, we're weeks away from that. It is not, it doesn't happen at a drop of a hat like that. So I think it's very important, and I can, I continue to try and communicate in as many forms as I can, and that the federal announcements, there is a, there is a lag between what is announced at the federal level and what is actually realistic for the healthcare system and the, and the status of testing at the local level. We'll get there, but it takes time. And so it's very important that your first point of contact be a phone call to either the Health Department or your primary care physician. If you are feeling ill, please call. Do not show up at your place of healthcare, whether that's the hospital, Prairie Star, the Little Clinic, Hutch Clinic, the local Health Department. Please call and we will help you through the process. And if you meet criterion to be tested, then we will call you in for testing or we will refer you to the primary care physician to vet and collection. But all the way back to your initial question, Chairman, testing is happening in Reno County. We are being instructed not to communicate the number of tests, in part because the number and how small of a community we are, we don't want people beginning to count those numbers and match that with people who potentially are in isolation because it's a hip, it's a HIPAA concern for the identification of those being, being isolated as we're waiting for tests. And we're trying to combat the level of miscommunication. That could change in the near future, but as it stands, we're being, it's recommended from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment that we don't release the number of tests that are, that are being pushed to the state level.
Okay. So you have tested people in Reno County and those people, some of those are in isolation, but you have no confirmed cases of the virus in Reno County?
That is correct. We have, we have no positive confirmed cases of COVID-19 within Reno County.
Just a couple more questions and I'm sure the other Commissioners and maybe someone in the audience has questions of you. I was listening to the radio this morning and some people from 308 was on. And I believe their chief nurse or someone that's involved in school nursing.
Livia Kite.
I believe her statement was that she believes that there are cases of the virus in Reno County. Would you think that that is an accurate statement?
I think the potentiality of COVID-19 being in our community is a real one. My expectation would be that as testing capacity increases and our ability to broaden that net, so to speak, widens, that we will find COVID-19 in our community. So I would say that I align somewhat with, with that statement and that I do believe that it is already here. Again, our testing capacity is, is very limited, as well as right now, we are only testing people who are showcasing symptoms or have a known, we have, we have a reason to believe that they've been in contact with a COVID-19 case. That isn't to say that we should be, that isn't to say that we should panic or ostracize our neighbors, friends, family. Rationalization and leaning on the most recent scientific literature and information and receiving your information and recommendations from your health officials is the best thing that you can do in terms of being an informed citizen, being an informed neighbor, and quite frankly, what, what we need is everyone to play their part and be a, a good civic servant in not adding to the misinformation that is, that is running rampant. I continue to say this, I feel like, I feel like as a public health department and a health officer, and I'm sure all my peers across the nation are, I feel like we're fighting two pandemics. We're fighting the actual viral pandemic and we're fighting a misinformation and fear pandemic. And we can control this, right? Let us focus on this, but we're spending so much time combating both that, that.
So more, where's this, where are you seeing this misinformation coming from? Like the social conversation?
Generally speaking, I'm sure there's other methods, but right now, yes, I mean, the social media firestorm in terms of pushing information without it being pre-vetted sources or sources of scientific information. It's, I mean, people, people read headlines and people extract what they want to extract.
So for example, maybe the testing that was done at Siemens last week was determined to be a negative and.
I'm absolutely happy to address that publicly. So yes, there were, we, we were in communications with the management at the Siemens plant. There were three employees for which we were notified as a public health department. And we worked with Siemens in regard to the best, the appropriate steps to take with those individuals. And we did, we did test one individual and everything has come back negative for the Siemens plant.
Okay. I applaud what you've done on the county website. And I know you're, how often are you making posts on your Facebook account?
So I am attempting to have a press release, public, public press release, at least a minimum of once, once a day. But depending on, depending on the information and how it shifts, potentially two times a day. And I'm pushing that to the, the main Reno County social media page, the Reno County Emergency Management page. They're being published there. I'm pushing it out to a very expansive listserv of not only the media, but also a multitude of community stakeholders in our community that's extremely eclectic from healthcare to daycare centers to religious institutions. We're pushing it out everywhere. And then I'm also personally advocating for individuals in our community who, who may have a social following, a social base to repost or share that to try and reach as many people. I intended to, and I apologize, I intended to look at the, the emergency management numbers when you, when you share information, you're able to kind of get a quantitative number of how many people it's, it's reached. And if I remember right, Adam, I think one of them, we, we reached over, over 20,000 people or 20,000 hits, I guess, through those analytics. So I mean, we're getting, we're getting it out there. We're trying to get it out there, yeah.
Okay. Other Commissioners, questions, please?
I don't have any more questions, but thank you for all, everyone for all their work, extra time.
Yeah. You guys are doing a great job. Just a couple of things. One is, on these tests, are they, are they spread out among all the different, like the clinic has some and hospital has some and public health has some? And how does that, how's that managed?
Yeah, so.
I don't care how many you got. I just, I'm just curious as to how they're managed.
So there's a differentiation between, it, it, it's kind of mixing. So collection of specimens and actual test kits are two separate things.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
Yeah. So Hutch Clinic, the hospital, and Prairie Star, technically Little Clinic, however they're referring, it's a, it's a fair, or sorry, nose and throat swab. And generally speaking, any healthcare facility should be able to collect those specimens. The utilization of an actual test kit, again, is after the vetting of whether you meet some particular risk factors.
Right.
And so right now, there is technically no test kits in Reno County. They are at the state level to run those.
Ah.
But we are a collection point. And we, like, all of our healthcare facilities are a collection point. And we collect and vet whether they will be run and tested. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so you can go to Hutch Clinic, Prairie Star, the hospital. Unfortunately, we don't have the capacity at this time at the Reno County Health Department, but those three main players in our healthcare system can collect specimens.
So they collect the specimen, send it up to Topeka, and then somebody up there tests it?
Right.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, just to put it simply.
Yep. Okay. And then, so on the social media piece, and again, you cannot win this. I know that. And I appreciate your efforts for getting as much of the word out as possible. But, you know, I mean, just a good example is, you know, my employees go around six counties and one of the clerks at the grocery store is telling everybody that we have a confirmed case of COVID-19 in Reno County and no one's just talking about it. So you just can't win that battle. And so I would just encourage you to continue to push, push, push with science-based information, which I knows what you're doing, and access even some of the darker corners of the internet and a little bit more creative or crazy parts of it, to at least put our message out there as well.
Yeah.
And again, I know that you're doing that. I appreciate that's a lot of time and effort on staff. One of the issues that has been coming up at the national level has been, and it's actually in this message you sent us from KDHE, and it has to do with restaurants, bars, and clubs. Have we sent anything specifically out to those different channels about COVID-19 and social distancing and ways to, you know, hopefully, you know, flatten the curve so we don't have to shut these businesses down? Because I'm very concerned about what could happen to a lot of our small businesses in Reno County if we have to shut them down for eight weeks. I mean, many of them can't survive that. I know that servers can't survive without those tips.
Yeah. So currently, I know the President came out yesterday and publicly, he's, he's published his recommendations from his, from his team of, you know, the under 10, limiting social gatherings, isolation of entire homes, and one of which, which I think he spoke directly to was congregating places of business such as bars, restaurants, things of that nature. Currently in Reno County, we have not made that recommendation, in part because Kansas, the state of Kansas has not adopted that as of whatever time it is today. That being said, I've been, I've been in contact with our Chamber of Commerce. It's kind of the vehicle for our private industry. Additionally, I actually was sitting down with the Chamber of Commerce yesterday. Actually, we were talking about this and midway through the meeting, the Governor had her press conference and then the President had his conference. So it shifted the conversation a little bit and it's to be continued. You know, I, it is my understanding that certain business owners are taking proactive steps in terms of shutting down their businesses. However, it is not currently, it has not currently been recommended by the Reno County Health Department and the, or the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. That isn't to say that I don't applaud those business owners that are taking a proactive approach. However, we are trying, and I am trying to work to the best of my ability to, specifically with the Chamber of Commerce, to try and put into place specific planning that, that can be preventative in nature, taking appropriate steps for the, to the environment as we have it today until such time that it becomes more restrictive. Does it, I mean. Does it, I mean, the challenge is that it's shifting so quickly. So, legitimately, I was sitting with Deborah, and we were talking about plans as it relates to the 50-plus, and then the president comes down at the tail end of our meeting. So, I mean, it is just shifting so quickly. But at this time, it is not the recommendation in the state of Kansas to close bars, restaurants, what have you. That isn't to say that pre-planning can be put in place and beginning to shift those operational chain, operational plans and chains to be more distance-oriented in our delivery. And I do think that that would be an appropriate thing to be planning for now. Because I can't speak definitively, but it would be my expectation that we're going to get there.
Okay.
Okay.
A couple more questions. Nick, do you have enough staff and help doing what you're doing at the Health Department? I know you've spent hours, but do you have enough of your staff assigned to this to supplement your efforts and so forth? And so, we feel that we got backup for you?
Yeah. Right now, I would just commend my staff for their response. And they have been, they have been consummate professionals. And obviously, somewhat unfortunately, I think we're only at the beginning. But to answer your question specifically, Mr. Chairman, I think right now, we're doing okay.
Okay.
That could very well change. But again, it's such an ever-evolving scenario that as of today at 9:30, I think we're doing all right. But I also commend Adam. He's been right there, lockstep, emergency management.
So, Adam can coordinate the people you need in meetings to get there?
Absolutely. And one of the things we are trying to do is, we're trying to begin to coordinate and synergize and distill into specific meetings, which obviously with the mass gathering restrictions are now probably going to be more so calls, webinars. You know, I know a lot of people want information, and we're trying to create those, those models and opportunities for as many stakeholders in our community to get the same information at the same time versus my meeting jumping and whatnot. So, which, if we can also accomplish that, would free some more of my time and some of my leadership team's time to be able to be more in the office and kind of responding from home base, so to speak. There was a few things that I did want to touch on, just Commissioner Bush, because you mentioned it. I did want to speak to just explaining the narrative of flatten the curve publicly. But I also, I've, I think it's very important, and I've talked about it today, is the strategy in response to try and combat that fear and misinformation, kind of a pandemic, as I use the same terminology. And one of the things that I'm very resolute on is being out as much as possible in front of the media, communicating with media. Today, after our discussion with, with the chamber, we will actually be conducting a town hall at the city chambers. It'll be a Facebook Live event. It'll also be livestreamed on the city's page and their YouTube channel, I believe. I was on, I was on Channel 12, KWCH last night with a panel from Hutch Regional, Dr. Decker, who came and spoke with me last week, as well as Dr. Gerro Minz, who's the dean of the KU School of Medicine and the health officer for Cedric County, just answering questions, as well as a fantastic team of Cedric County employees and Hutch Regional employees that were doing a phone bake and answering Facebook. I'll be on the radio on Thursday again with Hutch, in concert with Hutch Regional. I think it's very important to be available for those opportunities to try and get the most accurate information out in as many different modalities as possible, and to be in front of our, of our, of our community, and have them understand that we are working as hard as we can in their best efforts to protect the health and safety of our constituents. I believe very strongly in that. And so, I'm dedicating my time to try and be as available as possible within those methods. Also, you know, Dr. Fauci at the federal level talks a lot about flattening this curve, and I think a lot of people are picking up this kind of narrative of flatten the curve. But I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding of exactly what that means necessarily. And I don't, you know, I don't have a whiteboard, or else I'd go all instructor on you. But, you know, if you've seen the picture of the curve, right, there's, it's just a x-axis and a y-axis, and you have this large spike bell curve, and then you have a flat bell curve. And that x-axis, so moving vertically, is the number of patients, or in this case, positive COVID-19 patients. And then the y-axis, or on the horizontal line, is time. And really, what we're trying to do is we need to draw a third line, a reference line, that says healthcare system capacity. And that's really what we're talking about when we say flatten the curve. So, I'm going to use a very rudimentary example with numbers. If the large spike bell curve, the tall one, is 100 clients, what we don't want, and what we're trying to circumvent when we say flatten the curve, is we don't want 100 clients who are COVID-19 positive to present, let's just call it our hospital, on the same day. Because that will severely overwhelm our healthcare capacity here. Our hospital's a 172-bed facility. There are, I mean, they would tell you that they're, they're teetering at capacity with just influenza right now. Right? 100 people in one day is going to completely overwhelm that. We expect that those 100 people are going to catch COVID-19. When we say flatten the curve, and all of the steps that are being taken nationally is to try and elongate the spread of COVID-19. So, we know, we know that in this example, 100 people are going to contract COVID-19. But what we're trying to do is elongate that contraction time, so when they present to our healthcare system, we have the capacity to serve them along with the standard healthcare for anyone else that has a non-COVID-19 illness or situation happening. Because if we overwhelm the healthcare system, people that would normally recover from other illnesses and other emergent situations may not be able to receive the services that normally would not be detrimental to their health and/or lead to mortality. And that's what we're trying to prevent. We are not trying to prevent people dying in the streets from COVID-19. That's not the nature of this illness. But we are trying to prevent our healthcare system being completely overrun, for which then standard care that everyone is accustomed to receiving, it doesn't become a, it doesn't become a if situation, it just becomes a when situation.
Sure.
And I hope, I hope, I hope that makes sense, and I hope to continue to share that message, so.
Nick, talk to us about the flu season. That seems to be a little worse this year than normal, and is it continuing to be?
So, it has certainly, it has certainly been a robust flu season, one that has hit us particularly hard. What I can say is that this season, two strains of influenza have really taken hold. The influenza A strain, which we saw at the beginning of this season, as well as influenza B started coming on about midway through this season as well, which has elongated what we call our flu season. I guess the good news, however, is that two weeks ago, there was an expectation that we were going to have a double helix kind of a flu season, which meant that, again, using the bell curve example, you know, our number of cases of A rose, and it was dropping, but then B came up, and it matched, if not surpassed, the number of As. We call that a double helix, a double peak. B was on the rise, however, it is already beginning to plateau, and it is not near, it is not near the level of influenza A that we've had in our state and in our community, which is a good thing. So, we're hoping that that trend continues, and we just haven't hit a lull in influenza. What we really need is the sun to come out and warm up for us. But generally speaking, I do think as of today that we are seeing a lull in those Bs. The As have definitely dropped. And so, hopefully, we'll begin to see a downward trend on the influenza season.
And related to a decrease in patient load at the hospital?
Yes, yes.
Okay. We've taken a long time, but I think all the people in Reno County are very, very interested in this subject.
Absolutely.
Nick, any way that we can help your department, please, let the county administrator know that we need to provide the resources to your department that are needed at this point in time?
Absolutely.
Thank you for the update.
Yes.
Okay, at this point in time, the commission will take public comment on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come to the podium at this point in time? State your name and address. Limit your remarks to not more than five minutes, please.
Good morning. Susan Hilton, 10408 East Mootch Creek Road. I start off with saying that nobody has green on, which is very dangerous for you today. Two weeks ago, I attended the planning and zoning meeting, and the planning and zoning folks voted almost unanimously, but voted that the southeast corner of Reno County should be zoned. My question to you is, where are you at at that? Because my understanding is you are the next level.
Randy, would you like to speak to that?
Yes. I spoke with Mark yesterday, and that will be, he will have that for next Tuesday's agenda for the commission. I talked to him yesterday.
So, is that an action item or a discussion item next week?
An action item.
Okay.
So, what does that mean exactly? I just want to, that means you will...
That means, as I understand it, that the commission will discuss the subject and probably take a vote on that recommendation at next Tuesday's meeting.
And then, are you the final? I mean, does that mean, is there another step? You know, there always seems to be another step. I'm just wondering if that's, okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. That is all I had today.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Glad we had an answer.
Me too.
Okay, at this point in time, comments by the commission?
Another person.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Good morning. My name is Angela Mans, and I live at 1491 East Maple Grove Road. I first wanted to thank all of you guys for all the hard work you're doing with all this that's going on in our county, in our nation. Thanks for getting all the information out to what we need to do to protect ourselves and our communities and stuff. I also, I came today thinking that the zoning for the southeastern portion of the county would be on the agenda, and then realized it was not. However, I'm also coming to you today to ask you to really push some regulations for wind energy. As a county, we need to be proactive and instead of being reactive. If you recall, in October 2018, the Planning Commission voted in favor of a moratorium on energy conversion systems until we could look into proper regulations. However, you as a commission voted against this moratorium because there was a pending CUP. We no longer have an open CUP. However, we also know that a new CUP could be filed as early as the end of May, 1st of June. Can you as a board ensure us proper regulations and setbacks will be implemented before that time? It is clear that the Planning Commission is looking for guidance and direction from need regulations implemented before June 1st, even if it takes additional meetings or implementing a moratorium until they can get these regulations figured out. Now is the time to make sure that proper regulations are in place. We should not let outside industries dictate what is best for our county. Mark Vonageon stated in a meeting I attended in December that the Planning Commission should be able to review and update all the regulations before May. However, when I talked to him on the phone a couple weeks later, he stated that there was just not enough time to get anything new in before June, he said. I have to admit that that's really frustrating, because we need these protections, and we need them now. Many counties within the state of Kansas have implemented moratoriums. I'm seeing more and more all the time that, and talking to other counties, that they are indeed, a lot of different counties that are putting moratoriums just to figure out what kind of regulations they could put in and make sure before a wind industry comes in and dictates. Reno County should do the same. Implementing a moratorium now would enable our Planning Commission the time to research and develop regulations that will benefit and save the county time and in lawsuits later. As a county, we don't want to have to endure another year of public hearings, lawsuits, and countless hours of emails and phone conversations. Please put a moratorium on wind energy conversions until the county Planning Commission has time to review the regulations and establish that proper setbacks should be. If proper protections are established, this would prevent so much more of the public hearings and all that we've endured in this last year and a half. We must act now. This is the time to implement regulations. Again, if proper regulations are established, wind energy conversion systems could be a beneficial and viable opportunity for our county. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Comments by any commissioners?
I believe, and Randy helped me out, I believe that the April, is it 13th or 16th meeting? It's in April, that that will be taken up. The regulations will be taken up.
16th.
16th, April 16th, and same location. That will be taken up and discussed. And as I understand it, there will be some limited time for public comment regarding that. Now, I think we've all received, according to my emails, we've all received some, an email regarding that, along with some recommendations and definitions and so forth. And I would expect that that will all be sent out to the Planning Commission members prior to this meeting, so they can have that information. But that's, that's the, on the agenda is April 16th, that there will be an opportunity for public comment. And that's when the Planning Commission will take up the start on the regulations. And so, there's an adequate amount of time yet for them to do this if they get with it.
Okay, I, I might suggest that my understanding is that the Planning Commission will discuss this subject. There's been no commitment by the Planning Commission nor the County Commission that regulations were necessarily changed under this review. They might, and they might not. That depends on the Planning Commission and commissioners in the future. So, the expectation of significant changes could or could not happen.
I think that's true, but I think that there will be, there, two or three years ago, there was a lot less information than there is now. And you are absolutely correct. There may or may not be any changes. But just the fact that it's brought up indicates that further education and knowledge is available out there that wasn't there two years ago.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, are there comments from the commissioners this morning? Ron?
Yeah, I have one. Adam's gone already. But I want to thank all the firefighters and fire departments that responded to the pretty good-sized grassland fire south of Turon, and it's being looked at. And the task force was put into play, the fire departments have. And Todd said it went extremely well, that everybody was safe, and the equipment was fine, and the working together was good. and the working together was good. So I just want to thank all the fire departments and firefighters that came out there. And, uh, that was a pretty windy day, could have had some disasters, but they handled.
Good. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, Bob?
I have no comments today.
I don't believe I have anything. Uh, uh, county administrator?
Um, yes, I have a couple of items. Um, the quad county meeting, that's scheduled for March thirtieth. Wanted to just check, I'm assuming you want to cancel that based on the number of people? And it's at a restaurant. I just wanted to see if that's something you want to continue with.
Well, we canceled it. The other commissioners would think that I was, uh, for not having it in the first place.
But it's up to you.
We won't have more than fifty people there.
I'm not sure of the attendance. Sedgwick County's not available, so they won't be there.
They're not available?
Usually about twenty to thirty.
Yeah.
Twenty, did you say?
Yeah, about. I did talk to the Quest Center people, and they're available to make a presentation.
Yeah, I'd say go ahead with it. Unless the regulations change.
What, what is the, fifty people is the current regulation?
Yeah, current recommendation.
Recommendation?
Yeah.
I'd say unless things change, let's keep planning on it, and depending on what the other counties do, what the other counties feel like. If not, maybe we can have it, uh, the next, if, if we do cancel, we can have it the next quarter.
Is Sedgwick not available due to?
The date, that they had other meetings that day.
I see.
Um, then just kind of give you a quick update. Five Bugle Consulting, um, for the fire districts has sent out surveys, had two different deadlines. Um, there's two fire districts, six and eight, that still have not turned theirs in, um, according to Adam as of yesterday. So I would just kind of let you know, probably either Adam or myself will be reaching out to those chiefs in those two districts.
Who is six and eight?
Six and eight.
Eight Yoder.
Sylvia and, and Yoder.
Okay.
Six is in Sylvia, eight is in Yoder, a lesser area.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I think on behalf of the, I think your request should be on behalf of the county commission to get it done.
Okay.
Am I going too far with my responsibilities by saying that?
Well, I think the, I think the first reminder should be gentle and friendly, and then maybe after that you could, uh, play the fireboard card.
Okay.
That'd be my opinion.
Agree, agree. Randy, be friendlier than I would be.
Yes. Won't be hard.
Other items?
Yeah, and then just, just a reminder, there is a planning commission meeting, um, on the nineteenth of this, this weekend. They will be talking about possibly an energy conversion system regulations of, of an order that process. But that's not open for public comment at that time. That's just a discussion for the planning commission.
So April nineteenth, there'll be no public comment?
March nineteenth.
March, March nineteenth.
Public comment.
And what time does that meeting start?
On that item.
Four thirty?
Four thirty at the Public Works Facility in South Hetch.
Okay.
And then.
Would it be possible for the county commissioners to get the, uh, documentation that the planning and zoning commission members get as well on this particular item? Because I know they'll get a packet. I would like to get that packet as well.
Okay.
And I'm sure the other commissioners would also.
Sure.
I believe we have what they were going to discuss already, that, uh,
Yeah, but I mean, I was gonna say, they're gonna have an agenda and a packet and just whatever they have for that night, I'd like to make sure I have in my hands as well.
Okay.
I mean, yes, I, I'm sure I've already received all the information over the past year and a half they're going to have, but I'd like to see what they're having, their agenda, just what they have for that night.
And then I guess as we're talking about that, could there be some system where that, uh, meeting is recorded? Um, I know Ron usually attends those planning commission meetings. I, I, I kind of feel like that when we are physically present at that meeting, it's, it's an invasion into their process somewhat. Now, now maybe I just feel wrong about that, but I would very mu-
I, what? I think you did.
I just, I would like to hear the conversation, but I would rather not attend the meeting, and that's my personal preference.
Right now, they have audio recordings of it that they keep, if they publish that anywhere. They don't have, um, the equipment, the technology at that facility to broadcast it, like what's done in this, in this room.
Do you think we could get a thumb drive of that recording, or?
I'll check and see.
Okay.
Sometimes it, sometimes it is very difficult to hear the, uh, commission.
Well, my expectation is just to hear what was said, but whatever. Other things, Randy?
Um, just, and I handed out to you, to, to commission, um, some COVID nineteen administrative guidelines for employment for employees internally. Just want to see if you guys had any problems with that. That's what I'll be sending out to directors later this morning. Any questions on that?
I'm fine with what you've written and the meeting you had yesterday with department heads and so forth.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, um, Joe?
I have nothing, thank you.
Uh, question of Joe, uh, with the, uh, courts delaying, uh, trials, that doesn't have anything to do with our lawsuit per se?
Not so far.
Shouldn't be delayed. Okay?
I think the court will entertain the oral argument, uh, on the, uh, motion for summary judgment on, gosh, it's, it's a Monday, April thirteenth, or is it sixteenth? I don't want to give out that information, so, but it's, it's about a month away, and the way this thing is evolving, at this point, I can say it should not affect it, if you don't know.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's, uh, no other items, could we approve the agenda as stated, please?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda submitted by staff?
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Uh, item C would be resolution twenty twenty dash oh nine. And I believe, uh, Ron, correct me if I didn't get the right number, the, uh, uh, vouchers are four hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and eight dollars, ninety-nine cents. Um, there's a motion to second, uh, no discuss, is there any discussion? Does anybody know when the issues are planning on opening the restaurant? I wish him luck with that. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we have a proclamation today. Is, uh, Candace Davidson here? If she'll meet me at the podium, please?
Very patiently here, thank you.
If you'll join me. Uh, whereas, uh, March eighteenth, twenty twenty has been designated national, taking down Tobacco Day, calling on all Americans to show their support for tobacco-free kids, embracing this opportunity to have meaningful conversation with underage youth who are contemplating life-changing decisions, and whereas the Reno County Council members value the health and safety of all our citizens, and our community has much to celebrate and more work to do to help citizens live the healthy lifestyle that affords them and their families long life and health, and whereas smoking kills more people than alcohol, AIDS, car accidents, illegal drugs, murders, and suicides combined, without thousands more dying from spit tobacco use, and whereas success will not occur overnight. Our patience and continued commitment to tobacco education and prevention are imperative, and tobacco abuse is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children. And whereas, the goal of Taking Down Tobacco Day is to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign, and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent underage smoking and tobacco use, and whereas the Taking Down Tobacco Day campaign, campaign theme promotes family and individual responsibility for living healthy, tobacco-free lifestyles, and encouraging those who use tobacco to plan for sex- sexation. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Reno County Commission, Kansas, do hereby proclaim March eighteenth, twenty twenty as Taking Down Tobacco Day in Reno County, Kansas, and encourage all citizens to join the rest of the state in promoting Taking Down Tobacco Day and a tobacco-free lifestyle. In witness thereof, we have set our hands and cause the seal of Reno County to be affixed the seventeenth day of March twenty twenty, and that's signed by the commissioners. Would you like to make some remarks regarding this, please?
So, there we go. I usually have a youth that does this, so I'll try and talk, um, up here by myself, but um, we are very thankful that you are willing to do this with us. Um, it's a kind of a weird environment today, um, with all this going on with COVID nineteen, but we appreciate your, um, backing on the Taking Down Tobacco because it is an illness that kills, um, addiction that kills a lot of people. Actually, uh, fourteen, twelve Kansans a day die from smoking-related illnesses, so thank you for your, um, help with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Candace. Okay, we've already done item, uh, eight, so we'll move on to item nine. Who's presenting this?
I can mention, do you want me to?
That'd be fine.
So, this is for, for to allow, um, construction contract with Putnam Concrete Enterprises at the firing range. The firing range, as you know, is owned by the city of Hutchinson, leased out to Reno County Sheriff, or Reno County. The sheriff uses this extensively and has, the sheriff has fifteen thousand dollars in his capital budget for, um, improvements, and he wanted to do this concrete that's on the agenda. The bid came in at thirty-four thousand. The idea was, from the sheriff, was to split um, half, fifty-fifty between the city of Hutch and Reno County. Now it's at thirty-four thousand, so the agreement would be, um, both would come up with seventeen thousand dollars. And in here, there's the construction contract has been signed by Putnam, understanding that, um, contracts with Reno County, but city of Hutch will pay their seventeen thousand, and Reno County will pay their seventeen thousand. And Joe has been working with the city attorney on what was needed between the city and the county to make sure that the city was okay with county being a part of this improvement to the firing range. And so this is just approving this, the construction.
Okay, and you're, you're saying that fifteen thousand is in the sheriff's annual budget for this item?
And he'll come up with, fifteen is in the budget. He just has to come up with another two thousand from other line items. I mean, he'll use that line item to come up with it, within his budget.
I guess, and maybe I'm quibbling here, but it seems like to me that we ought to request the sheriff to advise us where that other two thousand dollars will come from eventually.
Well, kind of disappointed the sheriff's not here as well, because I've got a number of questions, because I've been down to that facility a number of years ago, and they've got a building there, uh, that they have on the inside for training and for loading up ammo and stuff. They've also got the shooting range, and, uh, I believe the concrete, which was in terrible shape, don't get me wrong, when I was there, is painted, so you have distances for pistol and different things. I mean, I'd like to hear what the whole long-term plan is, because this is just the tip of the iceberg. If we're going to see this as a future budget item, having from the sheriff, I certainly would like to hear what his plans are.
Um, and he does have plans, and I can ask him to be maybe here in the near future, because they are talking about every year budgeting about fifteen thousand for improvements. They've talked about fundraising, maybe getting donations. The building's in bad shape, the, there's a lot of work that needs to be done.
Absolutely. And I had coffee with the sheriff, and we talked about this, and I'm not disagreeing with the fact that we need to have a reasonable range, uh, especially if we're sharing with, able to share the cost with the, uh, police department, but I think I'd like, I mean, I would recommend that we table this today until the sheriff can present his long-term plan, so that this isn't just a nickel and dime every year thing until we're at the end of the road. I'd like to know where we're going, I guess, would be my, my thought, and I don't know what the other commissioners think.
I had several questions myself, and, uh, I would like to have the sheriff here, because I'd like to know some of these lease arrangements. In other words, the long-term that you're talking about.
Right.
What the lease arrangements are, how long, what cost, uh, maybe even since I haven't been out there, maybe even a picture or two of why.
Yeah.
And how.
Yeah.
And was there other contracts? Was there only one bid? And where's Putnam from? Are they a local company? I don't know.
Pretty Prairie.
Pretty Prairie? Okay, they're local county.
I, I have to take responsibility for the sheriff not paying here, because this fifteen thousand dollars was specifically budgeted in his budget for this purpose. And I think I had assumed that, that probably was part of your budget discussions last year, so, uh, uh, and I, I told the sheriff, the under sheriff, I didn't think it would be necessary this morning, so, uh, please place that responsibility on me. I think they may be available, if you would like, uh, I, I know, if you'd like to, um, um, table this to the end of your meeting today, I potentially could get them here, and the reason I say that is that, the sheriff did, uh, the department, uh, put out a number of bids and ultimately brought the estimate of the proposal to me. And I recommended that this really need to be a more formal process if we are making a capital improvement on leased property owned by, by the city. And so, and the result of that was that I wrote this contract, and I also obtained a memorandum of understanding from the city, which I think is in your, in your packet, signed by the city manager, affirming that, uh, the city, first of all, approves the project, because our lease with them requires that any improvements on their property be approved by them. So they formally have said that that's acceptable. Uh, they've confirmed that they do have seventeen thousand dollars in the budget, their budget, available to pay for this. And they further confirmed that that, that seventeen thousand, when the, when the project is accepted by our, um, uh, building maintenance director, who the over, provides the oversight, that they will pay that seventeen thousand directly to, uh, to Mr. Putnam, the contractor. So we, we have that confirmation that even though the county is committed to, there, will have committed, if you approve the agreement, to paying thirty-four thousand for this, only seventeen will come from us and seventeen from the city. So anyway, with that in mind, would you like me to attempt to see if I can get them up here to address this? Because I know he was eager to get started on this, uh, process. I don't know how important one week is to him.
They were wanting to be able to lay the concrete, so I had time to cure before, you know, they got into some training issues.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with waiting today to see if we can get the sheriff here to talk about it.
I'll see what I can.
I mean, I don't know what the other commissioners think.
Okay, we only have one other item.
I know.
But she might take a while.
Okay.
Well, if he's in the, if he's in the building.
I hear the.
Hey, Joe?
Sir?
If he's in the building, great. If not, we'll just talk about it next week.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It's fine. I, uh, I have no trouble proceeding, but I think the other two commissioners would like to hear more on this, so let's, uh, see if, uh, those people are available. Uh, our next item, uh, would be an update from the solid waste management department. Megan, uh, please, uh, present your report and, uh,
Good morning.
Congratulations on your recent, uh,
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
New promotion to, I believe you're a director, is, is director now?
Yes, Director of Solid Waste.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Nowhere to hide now.
Yeah. I don't think I've hid for very long.
Well, that's probably true.
Uh, since it's, well, this will be our first update we've had here for quite some time. Uh, I figured I would give you guys some numbers from overview of last year, from two thousand and nineteen, and just give you an overview of what's going on, um, in our world out the landfill. So we implement a safety program out at solid waste. We have safety meetings every Thursday morning. Since we, uh, deal with such big equipment, we are around traffic, citizen traffic, public, all, I mean, eight to five, six days a week. Um, our employees, we watch videos, we, you know, we've had instructors come out and do safety training as well. Um, we just, on a weekly basis, kind of look at an overview of what we've done, things that have happened, you know, um, instances of, of, you know, near miss accidents, that type of thing. And, um, it's been a very successful program. We are actually currently at one thousand five hundred and sixty-two days without any lost time on an accident. So we are, our goal is So we are, our goal is every time we do this to get to that five-year mark, which is a huge, a huge thing for our environment that we work in. We actually have a program, usually in the fall, towards November, December, we do kind of a program where we do a steak feeder. We have the guys pick what they want to do for a dinner. And we also do, we purchase safety green. We require all of our employees that work out there to wear a safety green. So we do either coats, jackets, hooded sweatshirts, something that they wear besides just the vests, you know, that you see. And then in the springtime, we do kind of a barbecue. We do burgers and hot dogs and that type of thing. And the office staff usually brings, you know, we help bring in the food, and then that way, the guys, they get line-bearing safety green t-shirts. So that way, we used to have a uniform program. A lot of the, a lot of the employees didn't participate in that uniform program. This program has implemented, safety program's been in over ten years we implemented this. We've made it to five years at one time. We started over, and now we're almost at another five years. So, I believe that it works. KDHE, actually, we, we have to, you know, show that we do some sort of a safety program. And they are really, you know, we have a book where everybody signs when we do things and keeps track of records of what we do. And any new employee that starts, there's videos that they watch for pit spotting training, you know, scraper, scraper training when they're running scrapers or compacters and goes through that. So, it's a very good program, and I'm, I'm really appreciative of all of my employees out there that they do a really good job. And sometimes things can get a little, little, little scary at times on, you know, with muddy conditions or just in tight spaces working. So, staffing, we have twenty-two full-time employees. We have two temporary employees that are our paper pickers. So there's, I mean, you know, they go out and they pick those fences with our grounds maintenance supervisor. They go on Mohawk, they go Fourth Street. I mean, there's multiple times a day, if it's windy especially. Our, our temporarys and our grounds maintenance supervisor, he makes the rounds down Fourth Street or Sixth Street going into South Hutch in the perimeter of the landfill to help keep the trash, you know, off the roads. I know there's times that there's, over the weekend especially, Saturdays are busy. Come Monday mornings, you know, that's one of his first things he does is he goes out on the roads and picks things up and helps try to keep things looking nice anyways. We've sent our mechanic, we have out there, we have one mechanic, and we just recently sent him to a training at Foley Equipment to where it was electronic troubleshooting for, on, on big equipment, which also helps, you know, if it's something that our mechanic can do himself, it saves on costs of having to have somebody come out. But it's like vehicles, new equipment, sometimes our mechanics can't do those things. We have to have the specialized equipment that we don't have to fix things. But it's nice to be able to send them to training to know, he can, he can verify and kind of, you know, hey, this is what's going on with that piece of equipment and save us a little bit of money as well. And he's also really well-trained in hydraulics as well, and he, he has fixed a lot of hydraulic hoses that broke. As long as we can do it, he, he's done and saved us quite a bit of money when it comes to that. A little bit of recycling update for us. We have our household hazardous waste, where Reno County citizens can bring out household hazardous waste. We used to spend over seventy-five thousand dollars a year on recycling for our household hazardous waste and ship it off to Clean Harbors. Since we implemented our reuse program, we have our reuse building where anybody that lives in Reno County can come out and, you know, come out and get paint, lawn fertilizers, chemicals, stains, pool chemicals. I mean, what, you name it, whatever's in that building is free for anybody that lives in Reno County. So last year in 2019, we only spent two thousand fifty-six dollars and thirty-four cents to ship. There are certain things, if it's not in the original container, or if it's oil-based paint, things that have to be shipped off for recycling, we, you know, in, in the drums that we have to ship them off in the fifty-five gallon drums, that's what that cost is from. So, quite a significant savings from when we implemented that reuse program. We also take used oil. We recycled over almost six thousand gallons of used oil last year. Metal recycling, we almost, three hundred ninety-eight tons, almost four hundred tons of metal went, and we actually received money back on that metal we take to Midwest Iron and Metal. So it's not landfilled. That's also a cost, you know, revenue that comes back in. Right now, metal's not the greatest commodity out there, but we still recycle it. Batteries, we almost recycled seven tons of batteries, were recycled. Mattresses, we have a program that we work with, the Hutchinson Correctional Facility. They have their mattress recycling program there. So mattresses is one of the biggest pieces of material that we do not like to have in our MSW, municipal solid waste, the pit side. It, they don't recycle well, they take up a lot of space. So with that program, we have, we saved putting in the landfill over a hundred and fourteen tons of mattresses from last year, which is a lot. Little bit of information on our tonnages for last year. For 2019, we received in, and this includes all of our counties we are contracted with, which is Kingman, Stafford, Rice County, and Harvey County. We also do occasionally get some from McPherson County if they have to bring some special waste. But MSW, we received over a hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and six tons for 2019. That averages about four hundred tons of MSW trash a day is what we receive in. And our construction demolition tonnages, we received in, and that's only usually Reno County because everybody, every other county has their own C and D sites, unless it's something they don't take, and then they will bring it to us. We received thirty-three thousand, three hundred and ten tons, and we average around a hundred and six tons of C and D a day.
How did these numbers compare to past year's averages?
We, from seventeen to eighteen, our, when the recycling was, single-stream recycling came into effect, curbside, tonnages were, we were averaging two seventy-five, maybe three hundred a day on MSW. We have increased that number slowly, and I will tell you now, for 2020, our landfill tons have, have went up even more because of that recycling not being as, we were getting a lot of recyclable material back into the landfill that cannot be recycled. So those numbers are increasing.
And that, those tons are coming from the recyclable people because they can't be used in other processes?
Correct. A lot of it, we do receive in from Waste Connections, which is the, the single-stream recycling that we, that picks up in the city. And the material that they cannot recycle in their MRF facility, that material does come back to our landfill because that material cannot be recycled. There's certain things that, you know, plastics and glass that, that are not able to be recycled anymore. And I, I foresee that we will receive more in.
Is paper and cardboard still being able to be recycled?
Some of it, yes. But like, for instance, like a cardboard bought for pizza, you know, if the grease is on the box, it's not clean enough to be recycled. So, you know, a lot of people think I'm recycling my pizza box, putting it in the, in the container, but it's not clean enough to be recycled because of the grease that's on the box, so.
So how do you get rid of it? Do you take it out by hand?
They are, they are, when they sort it.
Yeah, they're, at, at the facility, at Waste Connections, they go through, and it's, I don't know if you've ever, ever toured it or been there, but there's, there's actual people that stand where the belting system is, and they sort through materials that cannot go through the machine.
Yeah, I've seen them, they're grabbing like pizza boxes. I thought they were grabbing like big stuff that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Wow, thanks.
Yeah.
Wait till my wife finds out.
Some spring cleanups, we, we have our household hazardous waste trailer that we do the surrounding cities, city of Buehler, city of Pretty Prairie, city of Sylvia, Turon, and even the counties, Rice County. They schedule our trailer to go to their, their city or the county. And that gives the opportunity for those cities, the people that live in those cities, to take household hazardous waste material, paints, chemicals, stains, that type of thing, to those, to the trailer for like a weekend is usually how they schedule it, Friday through Sunday. Then that will come back to us, and then our household hazardous waste technician, he goes through, sorts through everything, everything that can be re, put in the reuse facility, he'll put in there, and then what can't, he'll step back for recycling. But ninety percent of the material that comes in from that household hazardous waste trailer, it can be recycled or reused, so. I don't know if you guys were aware that we had a, a trailer that goes out to help the communities.
I was not.
Clean up. Just wanted to remind anybody, citizens that come out, we would like to remind people coming to the landfill with spring cleanup material. You know, I've heard some, some feedback a little bit, you know, where things changed at the landfill. Why are we having to separate so many items? Why are we having to go so many different places? And I know we've had conversations in the past where, you know, we have a facility out there that has a brush site, that has a compost site, that we have a C and D site, MSW, metal pile, tire pile. We do have locations for compost. I know you come out and you have bags, you know, leaves that are in bags. Regulations state, we, we cannot have those, that material, the bags sitting at compost. So you dump your bags. There is a fifteen-yard container that's sitting right as you pull into compost where you can throw your bags in that dumpster. And that dumpster is dumped then into our MSW site. So we do ask, you know, yes, when you're doing spring cleanups, you, you know, you can't just, we would, we would like that, you don't just pile everything together, meaning brush, limbs, leaves, you know, mix in with your trash from your yard you might be cleaning up, or metal that you have in your backyard that you're, we're going to ask if, when you come out to separate those items. And all that's doing is saving our space in our landfill. You know, as, as you know, landfill costs are very expensive. The cost of a new cell is over a million dollars, at least, at a minimum. And we, we do construct one of those every four years. So separating these and helping, helping, it really helps the county to keep things separated at each, each facility that we have out there. We do, of course, we still, you know, the commercial haulers with roofing, cleanout businesses, we have a form that they have filled out, and I've, we've brought this to you in the past, letting us know where that material is coming from. I know that I've had questions on some big construction demolitions that are going to happen in the county here in the near future. Any house demo? If the house is not, you know, deemed that it is unsafe to inspect, we would like to be notified when that house demolition occurs for the reason being, if it can be cleaned out, meaning furniture, if somebody leaves it, you know, and there's, it's an old house that the city has condemned, they know that they, we go out and we inspect those houses to where there's no furniture, there's no trash. The house itself, the roof, the, the windows, the siding, all of that can be separated and put over into construction demolition, rather than putting everything in one dumpster and having to go to the pit, if that makes any sense. Bigger construction like hotels or, you know, things that might be tore down, we, you know, have, have, we like to go out and inspect those because if we can keep things separated, it keeps, it keeps material in the correct location of where it's supposed to be at the landfill. Project updates, we have turned in our comments, back and forth, we've been discussing with KDHE. As you know, we have turned in a permit modification to go up twenty-five feet in the air, higher than we are now, for expansion for our landfill, which will give us an additional fifty-five to sixty years of life where we will not have to go and purchase more ground. We've been back and forth in comments with KDHE on this. And in the meantime, we, I will be coming to you, you'll, you'll see a lot of me in the next couple of weeks, actually. Our project expansion for cell, our scale house construction. We need to be in discussions, we will be coming forth here in the next couple of weeks on Mohawk Road. That's going to be one of our big topics. We, as myself and our consultants, SCS engineers, and I've also spoke with Randy here recently in regards to, and also had meetings with Don Britton on Mohawk Road since we are looking at moving everything across the road to the east where the county already owns that ground. We're looking at Mohawk Road at our property line, where we are looking at proposing possibly closing Mohawk Road at that property line. We've got some discussions, and we've had, we've, we've got some data for, for, when we come to you guys in regards to that. But Mohawk Road, you know, we are going to be having equipment run across Mohawk Road, bringing excavating dirt, borrowing dirt back and forth so we can do cell constructions for the safety of employees and also trying to monitor what's coming down Mohawk Road. You know, that'll be one of our discussions in the near future on Mohawk Road is what we're going to do with it. Close it or redesign the road to go around the new facilities. So, that's what we've got going on at the landfill. We're also conducting currently a rate study. We're having discussions and meetings for a rate study. As we all know, we have user fees currently with Reno County residents. We're looking at doing, you know, the options of tipping gate fee to a user fee, seeing what's the best option for that. So we'll be discussion, be coming in for discussions over that as well. Other than that, that's, that's what we're doing.
Megan, knowing that Kroger is going to discontinue the grocery bags they currently use, what, six months from now, maybe?
Well, I, I have, I really don't know the, the timeframe. All I have heard is if when they run out of those plastic bags, then they're not, they're not ordering anymore.
Okay, so can, can we be an advocate to our users to what to use that's acceptable to our site that's degradable? Because these particular bags are not biodegradable.
Correct, correct. And they're the first thing that you see hanging on the fence lines when you come out to the landfill is the plastic sacks. I know that we use, it has been over ten years ago, but we, at one point, we had worked with businesses, and they donated the reusable bags. And so we had different businesses around Reno County that actually gave, you know, they send us boxes of them. We would hand them out to citizens that would come across the scale with a reusable bag to, to, when the reusable bags became, you know, popular, over, it's been over ten years ago we did this program. Reusable bags are the best thing. If you, you know, have boxes, cardboard boxes, you can reuse, you know, those, those are still recyclable as long as they're clean enough to be recycled.
Okay, but you're, you're, you're suggesting using the reusable bags to carry your groceries home?
Correct, correct.
I guess my, my question is, do you just want garbage dumped into the dumpster? Because most people put their garbage in a bag and then put it in a dumpster. Is that, what, what?
The trash sacks, like the garbage bags, you know, that you, you put your trash, your trashcan liner into your, your trashcan, and those come out. Those will eventually biodegrade. I mean, it takes, I mean, it, it's not as fast as paper, but plastic, you know, it, it, plastic sacks will not. But the trash bags, if you look at some of them now, they, they use reusable recyclable material on some of them, so.
I would hope that we could suggest to our citizens to use appropriate products that would recycle.
And I have actually thought of contacting businesses again to see if they'd be interested in doing the reusable bag program. You know, that's the easiest way to get information out with the citizens that we see come across the scale every day to promote that, because eventually it is those, those Dillon sacks or Walmart sacks, they are going to be obsolete. I just can't give you a timeframe when that'll be, so.
Any other questions, Megan?
Yeah.
Always has very complete reports. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go back to item nine, which is the suggested contract with Putnam Concrete Enterprises for seventeen thousand dollars. Sheriff, the commission has some questions. If you'd come to the podium, please. What questions does the commission have of law enforcement?
Well, Bob's never very bashful, except right now. What, what's your arrangement with the city on leasing? Financially, terms, length of terms, how does that work?
So, so right now, there's a contract that was good for five years. I think it's renewable at the end of this year. I don't see anything that's going to prevent us from renewing for however long we want it. As far as I know, ever since I've been here for the twenty-six years, we've, we've leased that land. We've had, I actually have a newsletter I found from, I think, eighty-seven, eighty-six or eighty-seven, maybe, where it actually showed a family day taking place out there for the sheriff's office. And it was quite neat. So we've had that land for a very long time. I don't anticipate that we're going to give up that land due to the fact that we have, we utilize it jointly anyway, and we maintain it. I don't know that they want to take on that responsibility, but they're definitely helping assist us in doing.
Which is kind of on a five-year contract we adjust with. And you both maintain it, so there's no financial lease arrangement with the city?
No, we, we maintain it. Our range master does it, and we supply that, the funds for that. They, they don't maintain it. This, this project that I, I actually started or talked about and tried to get started before, while I was a patrol captain a couple of years ago. I was a patrol captain a couple of years ago, um, is something that they just verbally agreed to. Uh, I believe Mr. Sullivan has had, actually got it on paper now. Um, but I actually have some, uh, some information here on PowerPoint if you'd like. I don't know what, what he's told you or what the, uh, new county administrator's told you.
Well, this is actually what I'd like to see because, I mean, this is just part of what needs to get done down there, right?
Exactly.
So I'd like to hear what your plan is long-term and also what the future budget consequences are.
I'm sorry?
The future budget consequences?
Oh, okay.
Are estimated?
So, so I guess initially, we just off the cuff agreed to take fifteen thousand dollars apiece and combine it sometime during the year for some range improvements, uh, bigger improvements than just buying new backstops for targets or something like that. Uh, cause this, the range, it's very dilapidated. It's very outdated. Um, actually, the, the shooting platform that's out there is, was, uh, created from old asphalt millings. I, I don't even know where they came from. Uh, but we have had some injuries that have occurred out there, uh, in different situations and just the, uh, just the workman's comp claims, uh, paid out on those could have replaced so much stuff. Um, but if you don't mind, sir, go ahead and I'll just walk you through. This, this is our, our current, current range. Uh, as you can see, up in the upper left-hand corner is our, uh, that's our range house. Uh, that's actually been there. Our FOP, I believe, uh, funded that and the sheriff's office, they all came together and built it. It's just a stick frame building. Uh, the, the roof was updated several years ago, again, by our FOP. Um, it's just a hollow building um, that we utilize for training. Uh, we actually hold, uh, our, well, we have annual farms that we do. Uh, we have, uh, range days throughout the, the month, every month. And, uh, when we, when we get new hires, uh, we, we put them through a week-long, um, fire range class where they learn everything, everything they need to know and qualify. Um, and then on the lower right-hand, you can see actually the, uh, the shooting platform that's out there. Now, this is a, it's a pretty decent picture because actually the, the backboards have been all replaced. It's nice and straight and the grass has been cleaned out of the cracks on the asphalt. Uh, however, it's, it's very uneven and, and I think like the county administrator said, it just doesn't, the pictures don't do it justice, but this is what we got for now. So this is a, the current facility. Uh, it's approximately a twenty-four by thirty-two. It accommodates about ten people. Um, has small cleaning area, minimal storage. There's absolutely no running water out there, no functioning bathrooms, and there is some water damage caused over the years. Uh, on the left there, that's the front door. I believe that was a, uh, when we replaced that, we replaced it with a, uh, a donated door from damaged freight. So that's what's a, that's what's actually out there and that's been on there for years. And over on the right, you can see that, uh, that's the classroom portion. Um, that's inside the building. Um, some tables. We do have a TV that was donated by the, uh, asset forfeitures, um, to use for training. Go ahead, sir. Again, that's, uh, that, that upper left, that's a, just as you walk in the door, that's the cleaning table. Um, and then over on the right, uh, you can see that that's a, you're looking back at the door from the edge of the cleaning table. That's just some of the carpet in front of there. That, that carpet has been in there. Oh, I, I couldn't even give you a timeframe on when that was put down. Um, and then, uh, I know when we went, we had some, uh, units donated to us for heat and air out there. Uh, so when I brought an electrician out, you know, as you can see up the, on that left corner or that left, uh, left picture, I told him, I said, just, just ignore the water stains. It's dry right now, so don't worry about that. But he, he actually wired everything up and made sure everything was running right and had correct voltage and everything. Everything was safe. So that was good to get him out there. And that's just a picture of some of the water damage. And, and again, over on the right, that's, uh, the back corner of the, uh, the facility. And those are, uh, you know, and, and until, uh, our range master gave me this PowerPoint with that picture of the PortaJohn, I've always been scared to open that door and I've never, I've never seen it inside there. So it actually looked better than what I, what I thought. But again, there's, uh, the front corner, uh, and the back corner of the facility. That's the, the shooting platform and, and the targets and where all that area is. Again, that's kind of decent, cleaned up, but, because it was a recently taken picture where there's not grass. But once it starts growing and gets kind of crazy, it gets pretty nasty out there.
So is, is what we're considering today, this asphalt area that's shown on there?
That's correct. That entire area is gonna be poured, uh, with nice smooth concrete. I believe he's made some arrangements with our public works to actually do some striping out there, which is nice. Uh, but that, that right there is an overview of everything that we're looking at getting replaced right now. And you can see that it's just dried up, it's cracked, it's, it's rough, it's uneven. Uh, like I said, we've had some trips and falls that have either sprained ankles or sprained or broken wrists and, and, uh, do that out there.
Okay. Are there other questions by the commission?
Just what is your future long-term plan? How long is it gonna take to, to get this back up to speed?
Well, and, and this is something that I, I just threw out because I, um, I just wanted to do some improvements. I knew that, I didn't want to come and say, hey, I want two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do this range project or something. I figured if we could just do some money, think smartly, use it wisely, and over the course of several years, replace this or that, the building or parking or something, just get a nice facility for our officers to utilize and be trained in firearms. Cause this is actually utilized by, uh, multiple agencies. We hold a, a regional SWAT school and so there's multiple agencies that come to Reno County and utilize this range, uh, for this stuff. And, you know, our, our, uh, where we train at and what we have, it's kind of a reflection on us.
Yeah, it's pretty obvious that in the past years, we haven't done a very good job of maintaining and improving.
No, sir. The well hasn't been used in so long, I don't even know if it's any good. We'll get, uh, someone out there to check the wells, test it, see what, see what they could do when we start getting along. But in the future, I've already talked to, to Chief Hooper. He's totally on board with this. He's totally in, involved and, and, uh, for the next four to five years, still trying to implement on their side as well, about, about fifteen thousand dollars, uh, for improvements and, and we hope to do the same.
Well, I appreciate you coming up and showing us the pictures because I think, uh, on my account, I, I think I've driven by, is, is this on the way out to, to?
It's not on the way to anywhere.
Well, but don't you see it on the way to the old naval station?
Uh, well, oh yeah, that's, that's a KLETC range. That's a very nice facility.
Okay, where is this then?
This is across Highway fifty, uh, over, uh, you know where the Big M truck, truck stop used to be? It's like right on the other side of that.
Oh, okay.
Um, so it's not too far out there, but, uh, so hopefully in the future, we can, uh, you know, when I, when I took?
What is the other facility that I've noticed?
The other facility that you've noticed?
It's Kansas Law Enforcement Facility.
Correct. Uh, that's the Law Enforcement Training Center. That's utilized, uh, that's the academy, the state ca, state academy that's certified, uh, through, uh, KU. Uh, that's their facility.
But, and you don't perceive that there's any way that we could work with them, improve and coordinate?
Improve?
Uh, and just have one?
You mean just utilize their facility the entire time? Not, not, not since they, they reduced the, uh, amount of students and increased their course curriculum. I think they actually have, uh, multiple classes going on at once. I know we utilize their, their driving range, but their firearms range, it's, it's very, very select and choosy. I mean, we, to, to get in on their calendar is very hard.
Okay. Well, I happened to go down there a few years ago and I was a city council with Chief Heit Schmidt. And back then, it was in need of a lot of repair. And that was quite a while ago. So I support what you're doing. And I mean, I would be more than happy to see a budget request for, you know, fifteen thousand a year. The city's gonna match that for a number of years because I think you're absolutely right. Let's just slowly improve this and get it up to where it's respectable and, and effective, especially when you start talking about modern weaponry that you, that you're using, from AR-15s to sniper rifles and things like that. I mean, there's a lot of different things that you use that for. Um, and I think that's one of the biggest concerns that citizens have is firearm safety with, uh, officers. And anything that you can do with jointly with the PD, I think is great.
Absolutely. Okay, so is there a motion to approve this expense?
So moved?
Second.
The motion is second. If there's no further discussion, please call the roll.
I'd like to just say that I, I appreciate the fact that the city and the kids and the, and the county worked together on this and would anticipate that they would share costs to do the improvements as needed, as budgeted.
As budgeted, yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you all.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for being here. And I, I think this is an example of how the commission has questions on certain things. And as we understand, Joe said you didn't need to come and obviously you did need to come to explain what you were doing.
Sure. And, and you know, as long as, as long as I'm, uh, you know, if I'm available, I'm more than happy to come up and try to explain anything.
We'll consider not resuing the county councillor's contract due to this.
You speak on your own.
Thanks, Derek.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Um, are there any other issues this morning?
Yes, sir. Not for me.
Not, uh, uh, the meeting's adjourned.